Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for being here on a beautiful Saturday morning. I'll call this meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 So, we're got a long day ahead and I just wanted to set some expectations. My hope today is to run this meeting similarly to how we've done these workshops in the past. I wanted to just turn to Maria just to set some expectations around sort of the format in which we're going to expect the presentations.
Sure. Good morning, everyone. So, what I've done for the agenda is I've grouped what I would call like departments together. So, we'll try and tackle administrative services departments together, public works departments together, community services departments, et cetera. I did set some expectations and guidelines for the department head team in advance of this and I want to thank them all for their efforts. They were a tremendous help in preparing for the workshop today. And we have a standard outline for each department that we're going to use today to ensure that you're hearing consistent information with a real emphasis on the budget that's proposed. So, areas of focus for the upcoming year, any trends or challenges that they anticipate expecting, and then any significant changes. So, we called those budget highlights. It's a level services budget, but even with a level services budget, we had a number of coding changes and there were some contractual increases and such that were out of our control. So, we've done our best to really try and flag those items for you. And I would also ask today that if we could be a little flexible with the agenda, sadly, a couple of our staff members do need to attend funerals today. So, as a result, we did bump Public Works up to the very beginning of the agenda this morning. We do only have Tom Roy with us until 9:00 a.m. So, I would just respectfully request that we lead off with Public Works and we try to make the best use of our hour with Tom this morning.
Okay. Great. So, just before your presentation, Tom, we'll go through each section and have some discussion, ask questions, parking lot, whatever items need to be parking lotted, and then come back to those at the end of the day. And my intent is at the end of the day, if we've got something that we're prepared to vote on, we can take that vote today. Otherwise, make sure we have a clear set of next steps for any questions we need answered so that we can get a timely budget passed either at Monday's meeting or Thursday's meeting if that's necessary. So, without any further ado, thanks, Tom.
But we're already five minutes ahead. I'm still shocked. Good morning, everybody, and appreciate being given the opportunity to start things off. As Maria said, we've been public works with a very straightforward and very mean budget rather than just being able to keep the services that we have been providing for a number of years. As always, it is a large budget. We have a wide range of activities that we cover and I think it's important to call out that it starts out with what looks to be a 6.8% increase. That has to do with the one-time fix we did last year where we took money out of our roadway paving from our operating item and we transitioned that into a one-time use from the Town Aid Road account. If that was factored out, the increase is closer to a 2.32% increase, which I think is more reasonable and just wants to draw out that comparison. Within Public Works, we have an administration component, which is three full-time employees. That represents 270,000. We're almost level with that with a 0.1% increase. Buildings and grounds, all the custodians, all the maintenance staff, seven and a half full-time employees, 2.1% increase. Highway, which I think more often than not really is the front phase of Public Works, we have 20 full-time employees. Always interesting with highway, 24/7 operation, any day you need them, they're going to be here to help you out. We take care of the landfill through contracted services. And I'm also here with Tony Piazza from WPCA. Want to bring in those numbers, Tony?
And we have 11 full-time employees and our budget is with, excuse me, with our debt services, which is our clean water fund, long-range plant upgrade, is 3.18 million, which is pretty, again, contractual increases with salaries and insurance costs.
And I think the most important part of both the WPCA budget is it is not a taxpayer-funded budget, it's a user-fee-funded budget. They are a utility which operates within the town. Administration, we touched on everything from customer service. When you call out the highway, we have somebody who's going to answer that phone. We're going to do a work order. We're going to make sure that we give you a level of service that's appropriate to what you expect living here in Simsbury. We conduct bids, a great number of bids this year, grants, procurement for a number of services, including all of the town's energy and electrical services, liquid fuels, everything from natural gas, tree services, excavation services, everything runs through that very small portion of our administration. This year, we did our streetlight projects. So, now we are actually managing all of our streetlight complaints through that administration as well. Buildings and ground, again, we're taking care of our main buildings here in the center of town, bus shelter down off of Iron Horse. They do the lawn mowing up along Owens Brook. It's always nice to think we have 150,000 square feet of public meeting space that's being maintained by seven people. When you start looking at all of the things that go into that, making sure that there's room to clean and neat, set up and organize, it's a lot of work. And when you look at the square footage versus the number of employees, it's a very efficient operation. Highway, 165 miles of town-maintained roadways. The one I always like on this is if you just think about that, that's a road from here to Maine, two-lane road that we're responsible for maintaining each and every day. The fun is our road is not that straight, it's not that level, a lot of cul-de-sacs, a lot of trees along the side of the road, a couple driveways that may be an issue. And of course, this time of year, we always have the snow plowing. Big part of what they do is maintaining the roads during the winter, but probably more importantly is the work they do during the summer and spring months where we're making sure that the roadway paving is in a condition that it needs to be to service the traveling public. With that roadway paving includes making sure that all of our catch basins are functioning, make sure all of our roadside trees and guardrail is safe, we have signs everywhere that need to be maintained and replaced. Enormous number of pressures, including changing regulations, requirements for compliance, that really comes back down to safety and making sure that we're providing the public with a safe environment. Landfill, again, it's not one of the sexier parts of our budget or what we do, but it's important. And I think we have a lot of residents that really make use of our facility on Wilkett Road. Compared to other towns, what we pay to operate that facility is we are getting a heck of a bargain. Mike, don't you listen to a word of this. We also do our household hazardous waste collection. We do three household hazardous waste collections. Two of them are held here in Simsbury. The third has been held in Farmington. We are actually the organizers of a regional initiative on this. We do this with Farmington, Avon, Canton, Granby. We hold the contract. All of the other communities participate. We staff it that day with town employees. We take a list of who was there. At the end, we look and we divvy up the cars or the cost equally based upon how many participants from each town. We've been doing it this way for a number of years after leaving a similar service with MDC. Great service to our residents and it's being done in this regional effort at a lower cost than it was done when we'd worked through MDC. The other thing that I didn't put up a bullet on that is we also, under the landfill, is we recycle a lot of the materials that we dig up. So, when you see the construction crews working on the side of the road excavating to replace a catch basin, all the material that's getting put in that truck is hauled back to the Public Works facility and put in a big pile. That pile grows and grows and grows and every other year, we'll bring in a crusher. It actually breaks down all of the asphalt, all of the concrete and everything else into a material which we use to fill in the holes. So, it actually becomes a suitable construction material. And if you've been out to our facility, it's basically two big piles. One gets bigger, one gets smaller. That's the time to bring in the crusher and to actually recycle that aggregate. If we did not do that, we would have to buy fill material to be used when we do our construction operations. The fill material would be in the range of $10 to $12 a cubic yard. On average, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 a cubic yard for this material. WPCA, I'm going to just jump all over you, Tony, on this one. It's a 3.8 million gallon per day capacity facility. Within town, we also have five pump stations. Long and short of it, sewage flows by gravity. If you need to get up and over a hill, you need to have one of these pump stations. They take a fair amount of maintenance. There's 85 miles of pipelines in and amongst our streets that convey that service to our plant. And Tony's going to be quiet on this for now, but the main thing the WPCA does, and everybody thinks of it as a dirty facility, something you don't want to go to, their main job is to clean and protect the Farmington River. The water coming out of that facility is cleaner than the water in the river at the discharge point. So, it's really something to give credit to him and his guys and they do care about what they do and protecting the rivers is really of importance. Little known fact, part of the plant is actually owned by Avon and Granby. We take 21%?
Avon is 21% owner and Granby is 9%.
All based upon flow.
And we send them bills every year just like we send our users.
And they pay?
And they pay.
A little worried about Avon this year. This year coming up, kind of an exciting project for me. I live a quiet life. We're going to be implementing a new sidewalk rehabilitation program. I think this is something many people are familiar with here on this board. We've been working towards this for a number of years. It started with changing our sidewalk ordinance. With the miles of sidewalk we have in town, we're just now beginning an investigation similar to what we've done with our roadways. What is the condition of our current assets? What is the predicted life expectancy? What is the cost associated with bringing that up to a level of service that we need? Cheryl, I know you're going to ask when we get to the sidewalk program, we're going to focus it not just on sidewalks in general, but sidewalks that are downtown areas, sidewalks that are around schools, sidewalks that get the most use are going to receive a higher priority within this program. The other main component of this is going to make sure that all of the transition ramps, where the sidewalk meets the road or the sidewalk meets a parking lot, are ADA accessible. Right now, we are not fully compliant. Part of this program that we're doing right now is going to be to establish a long-term goal and have reasonable expectations of how can we get to that point so that we can serve our residents. Compliance with MS4 stormwater requirements. This is a federal and state mandate. We have had for years a stormwater management plan. The plan has changed recently and is requiring communities to do much more reporting, much more testing. It's a more rigorous program. It's something I think we've done a little bit in-house. Adam Kessler, working for Jeff Shea, has developed a preliminary plan, but there's a substantial amount of testing that needs to be done and there's a fair amount of training and other resources that we're going to need to look at as we move forward. Public-facing work order system. We have, over the last year and a half, developed a new work order system within Public Works so that when a request for a pothole comes in, we're able to better track it and manage it. We're able to see history on addresses, we're able to see history on roadways. And one of the things that I'm excited to do is we'd like to make that something that comes right off of our website. So, instead of receiving a generic email that says, "I have a problem," and then potentially our staff having to follow back up with some of the specifics, we'd like to have staff, or I'm sorry, residents have the ability to actually enter in their data directly. The only thing I'd say on that is with all input on a system like this, there's a certain level of pay-to-play. If you can't give us your name and address, you can't go any farther in the system. But it's going to allow us to come up with some better metrics in terms of the services that we're providing. We're going to continue to manage the capital projects that are assigned to Public Works. This current year, we're working on cold storage building and a facility expansion, which has been underway really for a couple of years. Looks like we're going to try and combine those two projects in order to get the best economy of scale. And tree removals associated with the little emerald ash borer. It's an invasive insect which has recently made its way into Connecticut and is absolutely devastating the trees alongside our roadway. We'll touch on that a little bit more as we go forward. Look at that, right there on time, Melissa. That bug up in the corner is not to scale, I can promise you that. I mean, it's scary, but it's not that big. As you drive through town, after I show you this, you are going to start to see all of the ash trees. And once you recognize them, you can't turn away and you can clearly see that they are quickly fading. We did a study in 2016 with Bartlett Tree. We actually have mapped and identified every location of the roadside trees in 2016 that were found to have infestation and damage. With that, we have size, diameter, and that's able to give us some approximate cost for the removals. Unfortunately, right now, removing the trees looks to be the absolute best option. We have a few areas in town where we may try to inject the trees with a treatment which will keep the ash borer away. The theory is that if you do this for a number of years, the ash boppers will soon leave the area because there will be no more ash trees left. They don't fly great distances, they literally go from tree to tree to tree. And if that's the case, then these trees will be able to save. As you look at the map off to the left with all the locations in Simsbury, we can't do that everywhere, but for example, on some of the parking lots along Iron Horse Boulevard that are town-maintained, when we looked at the overall cost of removing and then possibly replacing the trees, it was worth giving it a try down there. The little map up in the right-hand corner is actually Riverside Road North. It was a good way to pull that out and just show you how many trees can be on one little road in one stretch of town. And possibly, for those of you who live east of the river, that might be a good way to travel home and you can see these trees. And you'll start to notice, especially as we get into the spring, that the leaves are not going to come back. And if they do, they're going to come back with a yellowish tinge. Then also up in the far-right corner there, you do have a penny showing you the scale. Again, the bugs aren't that big. Labor costs, I think, were the big drivers on our modest increase this year. That was due to negotiated salaries. It's, you know, a little over $65,000 to meet our obligations. We have put back $162,000 into the highway road improvements line. That's still line, that line item is still lower than it has traditionally been, but again, it's working with our road paving program that comes from a combination of low SIP, capital, and operating budget to come up with that number we need to maintain the roads. We have a decrease for the first time in a long time at Eno Memorial Hall and that's associated with a little bit less use with the renovations that are going to be going on this summer. Also, at the same time, the portion of the building is down, it requires less in terms of cleaning and maintenance. Utilities are going up this year. There's just no way around that. So, when we looked at all of our costs, utilities right now are driving it. As always, as we go through our procurement processes on our utilities, gas, diesel, natural gas, sewer fees, Tony, sewer fees, water and electricity, we are going to do our due diligence, we're going to work hard, we're going to work with other regional assets to do what we can to save money. But right now, in terms of budgetary numbers, working with some outside consultants, that was our best estimate is where we should be. Capacity of existing custodial staffing levels. Always comes up that we have more and more events. The libraries here is always ready to talk about all that they do. The senior center is here and they do great things and we're excited to be able to support them, but it does take staff to do that. With the increased or the potential increase for one more meal at Eno, again, it puts a strain on our staff. We're not suggesting any new staff members at this time, but it's part of what our department does and it does add and stretch that resource. As we just mentioned, the construction at Eno this year is going to make some changes for the operations there. It's also going to have an impact on the library. Again, we see our custodial staff doing a lot of running around to make sure that as programs move, that we're able to get the appropriate signage up, that we're able to move tables, chairs, resources, possibly between buildings. We talked already enough, I think, about MS4 at this point. We also have some increases in the state's requirements for recycling and some of the reporting there. And of course, the uncertainty at the state level for the Town Aid Road funding.
Can you just remind me again of what happens if we ignore MS4? Considering we're practically getting nothing from the state these days?
Well, I think the first thing that they would do is probably stop any grants coming our way would probably be the first thing, and I do believe they may have the ability to impose fines at a certain point.
Yep. Just, I...
I ask it every year. Yep.
At some point, we're going to be paying the state, so...
In terms of CNR projects, over at Eno, I think the timing's going to be good, but on the south side of the building, the emergency stairway that leads from the auditorium to the outside is in a state of disrepair. We had replaced the similar stair on the north side the year before. It's just the joy of owning a historic building and the associated cost of maintaining it. So, it's $18,500. As we saw earlier this week, if you're anywhere in the center of town, you probably saw the buildings and grounds. We have a small John Deere tractor that does all of our sidewalks and does a lot of our parking lots. The John Deere tractor that we bought about seven or eight years ago has been absolute godsend to that department. It's in good shape. The attachments last about half as long as the tractor does, so we're looking to replace the snow blower and the salt hopper to keep that operational. Buildings and grounds, we're looking to replace one of their trucks, it's a one-ton dump truck. It's, right now, there's a 2007 F-350 that, it's every bit of a work truck. It's what they use to haul all of their materials to and from the buildings and it's just part of maintaining our fleet. Want to stop at any point or you want to just keep going?
Do we have any questions?
Stop to the group with questions.
Just a quick one. The Eno repairs you just pointed out, are those going to be done at the same time as the larger project?
We're going to, if the coordination works out, we can do it at the same time. The only problem will be site access.
I know they're planning staging and stuff on the sides and...
Yeah, if we can parallel those two, we would. The nice thing about that project is it's very low impact on the operation of the building. It's a much smaller footprint of a project than the other renovation work. So, we're going to try to do that if it makes sense both financially and logistically.
Well, it's just we're having some closure time there anyway, so if there was going to be more disruption in services, then it would be good to coordinate.
Right. Yeah, and most of that work would be done with a small three, four-man crew. It's a smaller operation.
Tom, is there a, I'm sorry, this was in here or someplace, and I read about the ash borer. Is there actually a line item cost associated with that that you're projecting?
What we had done last year is we had increased our tree budget last year to help, as we were seeing the onset, I think we increased it last year by 15,000 or 20,000 to help with that. This year, we're looking to move that as a capital expense over the next few years.
So, is that something that, considering the environmental impact of this, it's sort of, it's not just Simsbury, I mean, it's regional.
Yes.
I can't even tell you how many trees I took down in my yard that were dying and have become a hazard for the family and we took stuff down. Is that something we ever expect would be, we could start receiving monies at a higher level because of the regional impact on it at all, state?
I have not, I haven't even at this point, you know, within the world of trees in the state, I have not heard anybody speaking of any programs or any talk of programs. It's certainly something that would be interested to see, I think, as Sean mentioned, with the state's current financial. And as we're getting to the point that it's not quite become critical, I don't think a lot of residents have really appreciated what's going on, you know? So, I don't think it's risen to the level of the state that anybody's looking at it other than those folks within DEEP to deal with the urban forestry.
Yes, I see that, considering the storms we just had and those trees age and they die and they weaken, then these are becoming a public safety issue and then becoming preventative and then it becomes, it gets more cyclical and then we start spreading out into it becoming something that's either power company-related, US-related, regional-related, DOT-related, federal. Just want to make sure we're staying in front of and watching and advocating for any opportunities for us to not be bearing it on our taxpayers and putting it on somebody else.
Yeah, we certainly are. And the other thing that we have actually, with some local residents, we've even talked about doing a level of program to bring this to residents' attention about this is a problem because it's, like you said, these are only the trees which are in the public right-of-way that we're talking about. These are not the trees that are in people's front yards and in their backyards that are away from the roadway. And so often, I can tell you, we get the call in our office of, you know, people, you know, who've been told that they have a dead tree that's a hazard potentially to the wires or to the roadway, that's not of an interest and ever sourced to remove. And they literally have been being curious. I can't afford, you know, $3,000 to cut this tree down. So, I do think it's something worth looking at in terms of is there going to be a program and how can we help get the word out to residents that this is unfortunately the new reality.
On the utility expense side, just to change, or were you finished? I'm sorry. Did you have any other, okay, I didn't want to interrupt you. Are we seeing any savings coming from the solar projects on the high school, Public Works, and can we expect to see those?
We, at the high school, that falls under their budget.
Under theirs, I know, but...
I've been looking to get a fraction of what was coming off that solar array.
Yeah, but on the rink at the farms and the public, I know they're not probably all...
If, right now, we're under the long process of getting the contracts executed with the two developers that we're working with. If things go very well, we will see those savings this year. I just, we didn't want to count our chickens before they were hatched, yeah.
Okay.
And if we can get you those numbers if you're interested, but again, it just seems that we're getting ahead of ourselves to count the solar array which has not yet been installed.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
I'd feel probably a little better about doing that if the contracts had been executed and we actually had, we're in design phase, but we're still just under the contracting phase, so...
I have one other question on a different topic, if that's okay. On the sidewalk upgrades, I've been hearing a lot from the Aging and Disability Commission about the, you know, sidewalk conditions and improvements. I just want to make sure that we're being conscious of surfaces and how those impact people with disabilities. I know, for instance, the brick sidewalks are very difficult for people to navigate and those transitions become particularly important in those areas. So, I know you're going to think about that. We also hear that from like the Bike Ped Committee about allowing bicycles on sidewalks and there's a lot of other considerations to take into account when we start thinking about upgrading our sidewalks, so...
Yeah, we're going to be looking at several things. We're going to be clearly looking at where streetscaping is appropriate and where it needs to be done. Is concrete the right answer? Is patumin the sidewalks, you know, black asphalt the right answer? Or in some cases, we've already seen some, even though we don't have a lot of sidewalks, some of the sidewalks clearly were put in that may not make a lot of sense. We're leading, you know, a sidewalk on a neighborhood road to a dead end and we say it's in bad condition, so maybe part of our program we're looking at is how is it replaced? Should it be replaced?
Should be, yeah.
You know, if we have, you know, we want, it's going to be a holistic look at this.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, too, current town ordinance does not allow bikes on sidewalks.
I understand that, but there's a change that...
There's another step we have to do first.
I totally understand.
They've got several layers of review before that happens.
It's out there.
Tom, a couple of questions. One is back to Sean's comment about the stormwater from the state that comes through deep, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Which is where many of the grants that the town gets.
Okay.
And the pothole work order program, is that going to be smartphone-enabled and can that be tied into the GPS that's on your list up there to put into the plow trucks so that you can literally ping it, for lack of a better term? I'd have to check with Buzz to see if I'm being correct. See, I'm trainable, too.
This is sounding just south of witchcraft to me right now.
Well, it is, isn't it?
Well, the work order system that we are using is actually based upon our town GIS database. So, that's actually what gives us the residents' names and contact information and things as we go through the typical questions that we would go through on a phone call. And then it is, all of the work orders are geolocated to a particular address. The GPS on the trucks would probably, it's a separate function or a separate program, but to your point, when they go out and they patch the pothole, we're actually working towards the system at some point within the next five years to be that as the crew leader's there, we may get to be, there's a picture before that the pictures are all geolocated, there's a picture after. Before, and from a liability standpoint with potholes, we always run the risk that somebody says, "We knew about a pothole, it wasn't fixed and therefore they received damage to their vehicle." Sometimes, the pothole may not have been the same pothole that you saw three days ago. So it's all part of our risk analysis and making sure that we do the right things to protect the town legally, as well as provide that level of service.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back to trees for a minute?
Sure.
So we've only spent seventeen year-to-date?
I think you're probably...
Last three, six months.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, we're in our full swing over the next few months of our tree work.
Okay, so that happens.
Everything in year-to-date, by the way, is through December 30th.
Thank you.
We actually had a few days...
Year-to-date isn't last week?
Okay.
Your date is estimated.
Yeah, we had a few days recently where we had tree work scheduled that weather didn't cooperate.
Yeah, no, fair enough. So are we doing that, or are we contracting it out, or both, Tom?
We do two things. We either contract out a full tree crew, and we have a bid where we pay day rates, and we have expected levels of production. The other thing we do is we have a modified crew day where the arborist shows up with a bucket truck, certified arborist, and a chainsaw, and we use our town equipment and our town staff to do all of the groundwork.
Okay.
So they take on the very dangerous and very skilled work up high and around electrical lines. We're down at the bottom using the equipment we already own to process the wood and get it out of there.
Okay. So I guess, it leads me to, so we spent fifty-five last year, a year before, et cetera, so, I mean, we're looking at tripling the budget. I mean, has the ash borer problem gotten to that level, or are we front-loading this funding, or, I mean...
It's, I'll be honest, when I first saw the report in 2016, I kind of smiled and said, "Okay." A bunch of arborists went out, looked at trees, you know, it's crystal clear it's coming. We went down to Iron Horse Boulevard last year, and you could literally go from one end to the other and see where it started, and trees that had progressed to the point that they had to be removed, to trees that were just seeing the infestation.
Okay.
You said we're not at a critical point yet. Is that to say that there's, you know, it could be more expensive to deal with this if we put this off?
I don't think the expense would necessarily go up, but we start running the risk that if we have the trees, once they're dead on the side of the road, they become a significant hazard with dropping limbs and falling unexpectedly. I mean...
Okay, all right. And to Chris's point earlier, we've, I think we've been extremely proactive over the last, what, six, eight years of getting, see, EverSource out. Obviously, after 2011, we had a vested interest in doing some tree work, so we only, only had 230 people out over the last week, which I think is a significant improvement over what would have been years past, based on your department's work and EverSource. So again, it was tough for those 230 households, but add a zero to that in years past, right?
Yeah, it got a little dicey there for a while, but we're in good shape.
Tom, going back in the history, which is what I was speaking about, but you had an FTE increase in seventy, you added one person, it looks like?
That's correct.
How has that worked out for us as far as, were we, was that person, was that the lack of that person costing us?
Where that person, yeah. Where that person came in, or the role they do, is they're one of our truck drivers. Our truck drivers are also the same people who do all of our construction, so it's not just snow plowing. The two critical issues for the need for that person, our plow routes are still very long. When we look at the industry within Connecticut, most towns have plow routes that are in the range of ten to twelve miles. So each driver has ten to twelve miles that they're responsible for. At the point that we didn't, before we added that person, we were up over fourteen for our average plow route, so meant at the end of the storm, our drivers were going two more miles on their run that they had to do before they were able to get the job done and go home, go to sleep. So with that, we essentially almost took a mile off of everybody's run. So I think it's enhanced our snow removal capabilities. And then during the summer months, it's that extra person, because over the last nine years, we have ratcheted up our summer construction associated with our pavement program, and that's really where that person comes into play. So it added capabilities, you know, I wouldn't say that there's a direct, you know, in other words, it's not costing us money, it's an opportunity cost if we don't do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, no, I mean, I'm in the, you know, private sector, every organization thinks that they're underfunded and understaffed, doesn't matter.
Yep.
That's just who we are. Do you feel you folks are adequately staffed to get the job done that the Simsbury residents expect, that you expect?
I think we push our crew very hard. I think when we look at our surrounding communities, we probably are slightly understaffed compared to them, but I think, I really do believe we're getting more out of our crews. I can say that quite honestly, and I think at this point, I'd say we're comfortable where we're at. I know all you guys wanted to say, I should take more, but...
Any other questions before Tom continues?
All right. I'll ask a question. Tom, we're putting about a hundred and sixty-two, or a hundred and sixty-two thousand into, back into, or into the operating budget for road maintenance.
Yep.
About a hundred and twenty-seven is, was the town aid fund, and then thirty-five thousand otherwise. What led to that number, being the appropriate number, the hundred and sixty-two thousand?
In terms of what was being put back in?
Yeah.
I think it all starts off with a bigger number, which is one-point-three million. And the one-point-three million, and it's a very round number, is what we need to pave roughly ten miles per year and do the appropriate interim maintenance, crack seal, and some other things. That's the, that's based upon, we have that hundred and sixty-five mile road, and just like the Golden Gate Bridge is being painted today, and they set up a crew large enough that they paint the bridge from one end to the other, and when they get to the far shore, the other shore needs it. So that way, it's just a continual operation. Well, with a hundred and sixty-five miles of road, if each new paved roadway lasts roughly seventeen years, we need to pave about ten miles per year to keep the overall quality of our roads the same.
Makes sense.
So this puts into that balance that you're looking at.
Exactly. And the other thing that helps our department tremendously is level-setting that funding. If we do big tranches of money, and then all of a sudden, there's a year with a drought, so to speak, and big tranches back, it's more difficult than if we have kind of a very predictable level-set number, so that we keep our resources focused on certain tasks, and it also allows us to better forecast.
Okay. So I think, just want to, I think this is a fairly conservative budget that you're coming forward with, and I like the idea of putting back, we've talked about wanting to put back into operating what should be in operating. I think we really should keep track of that, because it's gonna be a substantial part of the total three-point-nine. I mean, that represents, you know, eighty basis points, or eight, you know, eight percent or one percent right there. So I think we should be, you know, keeping that and articulating that with the Board of Finance, that I think have agreed to that concept as we, you know, look to justify what our ultimate budget increase is, so...
That's a great point.
I agree with that. We'll just add on, though, is we kind of talk out of both sides of our mouths on this issue, though, right? Because we've got three hundred thousand back in for road and drainage, or, excuse me, road improvements, and then we've got, what is it, eight hundred thousand for paving and capital? So we are funding it in two different places, so...
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're talking out of boats.
We are, because it's an operating item.
Yeah.
Yet, we fund some of it in capital.
Right.
And then we fund some of it in operating, but we, again, we've done this for longer than you and I have both been on the board, but we need to, you know, philosophically, are we working towards all operating? Are we working towards all capital? Are we comfortable with this balance? You know, and that's, that's been, you know, so...
Well, my idea would be to be in operating, but there's the reality of where we're trying to, what I see this as trying to course-correct back to what to me would be a more appropriate balance. But you are right, Sean. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, and that line item historically had been as high as a few years back of four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Right.
So it's been heading in the different direction, and I think what I'm hearing is that we're going to be moving it back over, potentially over time.
We're gonna have something?
Sure.
So as Tom had mentioned, in total, this budget has one-point-three million for paving. About eight hundred and fifty thousand of that is in capital. The remainder is in LoSIP, and then within the operating budget. We were very fortunate this year because of our debt service payments, they had decreased. So for this particular budget, we actually proposed funding paving, whether it's in capital or in operating with cash. So I think that's a really positive, positive piece for this budget. You know, I think long-term, though, that conversation is, is if we have, you know, some pretty significant capital projects, and we start to see debt service increase, well, then we would have less cash available in capital to pay for things like paving with cash, and I think with that, you know, we should be striving to pay for paving with cash. So I think, again, long-term, if that debt service number increases, we'll really have to sort of think about, okay, if we want to pay for paving with cash, do we just then add that back into the operating budget?
Well, to that end, that's gonna be a relevant conversation this afternoon, right? Because we're staring down twenty-three million of additional debt, and which would force that conversation upon us next year, right? So two years, whenever we go out to bond, obviously, so... Again, I have no issue with the way it's presented, but it's part of a bigger philosophical conversation of where does it belong?
Right.
The Board of Finance has been in six different spots on that, and we've been in two or three different spots, so it'll, we'll see where we have...
Over forty years, it's the same cycle. When times get tight, we tend to take, you know, those things out of the operating budget.
Yep.
And then we, when times are a wee bit better, we tend to put it back in. It's really a short-term decision that's made that, to me, isn't always the most judicious, but, so it's a great, this is a really good conversation to be having, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, Sean?
I can just add one point, too, and you guys mentioned it, but you also have to recognize the requirement of LoSIP funding, which has been stable until, except for the fact that last year, you may recall, they rescinded our fiscal seventeen appropriation that they made, or making it up to us over eighteen and nineteen. And that did hold true in the governor's and the board's budget. So over the three years, we will be getting the four hundred and fifty thousand. You'll notice that's why the appropriation budget request for LoSIP is one hundred and fifty-five, not technically the hundred and eighty that's in the governor's budget, because that's pretending we didn't get cut before. So I want to make sure we have those same three years...
Right.
...level funding. But we do have to recognize that they stopped bonding, and they bonded for that, so if they have challenges bonding, we are also, so I think it's good that we've spread it over three hots, but we have to recognize they're all...
I think Chris makes a great point as to how we present this budget, both to the Board of Finance and to the public, is to, you know, to show where we're making those adjustments, because it is going to benefit us in the long run to move these expenses back over to operating. So it is part of the pitch, so to speak. And I think that's a great point.
I mean, that one expenditure is twenty-six percent of our total budget increase, so...
Yeah, just to note, you were, we were up around two million previously, right? Because we were on a road improvement...
That is correct.
Plus, it's because our, the overall quality in the prior twenty had deteriorated beyond what we had expected, and your department did an outstanding job getting us up, what was it, over the eighty-five percent threshold, I think we were shooting for?
Right.
I do listen to your presentations.
Roadway surface rating. Yes. Yeah, and I'll be the first to admit, I think we have some of the best roads in the state, but at the same time, that's not necessarily the bar we want to be above. We want to, we want to be at a point that, what we've done with our roadways, not to go too far down the rabbit hole, is we are resurfacing roadways now. We are not doing what's called reconstruction. Resurfacing a roadway is in about twelve dollars a square yard. Reconstruction is thirty to thirty-five dollars a square yard. And because we've gotten out of letting our roads get to that condition, we're able to drop back down to one-point-three annually and keep an RSR of eighty-five, which is outstanding roads.
So if we hear from residents or other folks, you know, you can cut that back, or we're really, we've already done that, we've already managed down to the maintenance number.
That's a good, with maintenance, you either pay now or you pay later.
Right.
And this, roads are, you know, three times we've gone through this cycle, and it's, that's a great fact to use with people.
Nobody skips an oil change.
Well, they do, and they pay later.
Then it's engine replacement.
Are there any questions for Tom before he continues?
We gonna talk about capital?
Yeah, yeah, I just figured we'd take a quick break. I was on a roll there.
Sorry.
That's okay. Getting back to town aid road funding, these are CNR projects, but they're being funded through town aid road for the Highway Department. We have a replacement of a crew leader truck, fifty-three thousand dollars. Again, this is just part of our annual fleet replacement. If you're interested, we can, I have a schedule of all of our replacements over the next seven years. We're looking at adding GPS tracking to our plow fleet. This is a state-of-the-industry improvement. This is where most communities are at. It adds a service to our residents. If there was a complaint, we have accurate information, and there's some safety issues associated with our drivers. So very exciting. Based upon the fact that the future of the town aid road funding is in jeopardy, it is on the chopping block potentially, we took a cautious approach, and on our replacement schedule, some of the things that we were looking to do, we are currently pushing off, which is adding fleet maintenance software, rehabilitating one of our large construction trucks, that's called a do-all, at thirty-five thousand, replacing one of our trailers at fourteen thousand, and replacing one of our very large specialty pieces of equipment, which is a wing plow, at two hundred and twenty thousand. In terms of capital projects, I think we just beat it pretty well to death at eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the roadway paving. We have, starting in this year, is our sidewalk resurfacing at three hundred thousand dollars per year. As you go through any of our neighborhoods, I think we can all agree there are sidewalks in desperate need of rehabilitation, and I think this is gonna be a great project. The Emerald Ash Borer, a hundred and ten thousand. We had moved out a plow truck, our large plow truck, which had traditionally been in CNR, and prior to that, it was actually in our operating budget. We maintain out of our thirteen large trucks. We buy one each and every year, it keeps the average age of the fleet exactly the same. So we see the same benefits of leasing a fleet without paying a third party to provide that service. This truck is a little bit more expensive than the truck last year because we're not budgeting for a trade-in on this one, and that's because the other truck is, a specialty truck that's going into the fleet for construction purposes. Tony, do you want to go through some of the WPCA ones? So that, can I just stop there, so that...
Sorry, so the million is not actually, we're buying a truck ten percent of the time? We're buying one truck for ten years?
One truck for ten years, and the number that's being carried there, other than this year, is a little bit high because it's not including the trade-in value.
Okay. And that's a shift, because we put that in CNR previously, and we're moving that out to capital?
It was in pre, it was in CNR since 2009, and prior to 2009, it was actually in our operating budget.
And now we're putting it into cash item, which goes back to our conversation on paving. Makes sense this year, but we've got to be mindful of that in future years if that cash availability goes away.
Right. And when we, when we look at the fleet, again, it's very similar to the road, which is, you know, the overall fleet is the same age, the oldest one gets replaced, the newest one, so you, it balances out your maintenance.
No issue. I mean, we certainly need them, obviously, those trucks deteriorate for obvious reasons they're on the road constantly, they're being used three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So no question from a need standpoint, it's just, again, it's back to the where and how do we fund it?
Yep.
To make sure that we're not susceptible to short and long-term challenges.
Well, to go off of what Sean just said, you don't have to worry about where the funding is coming from for the sewer projects, it all comes out of the...
Yours is always my favorite, Mr. Sean. I like this.
No taxpayer involvement on this one, just the sewer users.
Drop them like...
Good, get yourself a Danish shirt.
The, as you said, you may or may not know, the Terrifield Sewer is actually the oldest sewers in town, they were put in in the thirties. And just, they're old, and we're scheduling, we have been for the past three years, scheduling on doing a relining and repurposing of the sewers there to get them up to today's code. So it's a, it's gonna be an ongoing project for the next few years. We have a couple of tanks at the facility that are needed to repair just from use over the past ten years. They're actually the original tanks that were in the fifties project, in the fifties plant, so just updating them.
Can I ask a question just overall? So when we're putting a sewer line in, or when we're rehabbing one, how much more is it to put in a water line and a gas line right alongside? And why don't we do that?
There's actually requirements, separation distance, you have to have a ten-foot separation from water and sewer.
Okay.
Gas lines can be closer in the same trench, however, they're always on top of the sewer, which makes it when you have to repair the sewer line, you're digging up the gas line to fix the sewer line. So you try to keep them certain distances apart, and...
But I think to the larger question is, Tony's group, Highway Engineering, we do coordinate closely with both Aquarian and CNG, that when we are doing projects, we do look to see if we can, because again, we're digging up the road, we're disturbing a neighborhood.
Yeah.
The other thing we've even done with our paving is we send letters out months in advance to tell people the roadway is gonna be paved, and if you are thinking of connecting to a gas line in your road, now's the time to do it, yeah.
I'm looking at it more from the, the gas line, and obviously, the water company take years to get, get on board with that. Is there any vision on our side to be more proactive in laying that pipe some way? Because we've already got the expensive part, right? We've already ripped up the roadway, that's, right, that's the most expensive part?
Yes.
And laying it back down? So, as our communities age, as we potentially face well issues, or solar projects and other things, does it benefit us to lay down thirty cents worth, and I know it's more than thirty cents worth of pipe, while we've got the road already ripped up?
Just to give you a, a good, a good one for you, we actually just did a project in the Maple Court area where we replaced the sewers and brought them up to grade, and we actually worked with Aquarian Water to come in and replace the water lines in the neighborhood as well.
Okay.
So, to do it as an overall project, so we're not tearing the road up twice to do the same project. So they're actually going to come in, and we're working with them to make sure we get the proper restoration completed, and they're going to share the cost of the restoration purposes as well.
All right, again, I'm not pinning this on you guys, it's just, you know, from a town...
Yeah, and because, it's not only cost, it's also, I mean, it's disruptive when we put in sewers or water or something in the neighborhood, so, yep.
Good question.
Just on that, this, this educational point, as I get this every once in a while, where there was urban myth or it's truth, or you guys can all win, there was a, a couple years ago, I believe there was some request or study or requirement put out that we would at some point in the future need to be transitioning more of our residents from septic to sewer and such, and it, as it's, as we look forward to the environmental impact of septic and such. Is that true or not? And is that, I know it's not a budgetary issue, but is it just something that I need to understand, educate our taxpayers and residents?
It's a yes and no answer. Within the town, about half the town of Simsbury is actually in a sewer service area. Not, there's about fifty percent of the residents in that area are serviced by sewers right now. By town code, if there is a sewer in the street, and you have a septic system and your septic system fails, you have to hook up to the sewer. If there are no sewers in the street, you are allowed to redo your septic system, however, the laws have changed for septic system rehabilitation, so depending on the size of the lot, you might not be able to rebuild your septic system, and we have to install sewers to accommodate those areas. Other factors that are involved are in aquifer protection zones, things of that nature, which would actually mandate the Department of Health and Department of Valley Health telling us we have to put sewers in.
So that, so maybe that's the myth. Is that coming then, at some point, when we're going to start telling our residents that we're going to, we have to transition?
That's only if, if there's a known pollution issue. There would be a state mandate to put in sewers, but that's only if there's a known pollution issue. If there's no known pollution issue, there's no mandate to put any sewers in.
Basically, when people sell their houses and somebody does an inspection, finds out that the field has failed, that's generally when we're going to find them?
Correct.
Yeah.
Very quickly, the process on that is anybody within the sewer service area can petition the WPCA to investigate putting sewers in their neighborhood. When that happens, we do a wonderful canvass of the neighborhood to see who's interested, who's not interested. If there's enough interest, we do a public presentation, we go through the actual cost, because each homeowner would be assessed their portion of that construction. The WPCA then will make a decision to either move forward or not move forward with the project. Just this past Thursday, they had made a decision not to move forward with a project in the Musket Trail area.
We had, a couple of years ago, on, on the Capitol Plan, West Mountain Road.
Yes.
That is...
That is a great story for you.
Okay.
We had... How many millions did we have for that one?
We had eighteen million dollars to put in sewers in that area.
And I think the, prior to that eighteen million dollar expenditure, we had, I think, five-hundred thousand for design, round numbers?
Yes.
We went through and we did a study, a very high-level study with a consultant, was able to show, due to the topography in that area, even if we spent that eighteen million dollars, you would still end up with fifty-some-odd pump stations to service that entire area. We currently only have five. So, the only viable option for that area would be to go to something called low-pressure sewers, where each and every home would have their own small grinder pump, similar to a very sophisticated sump pump. Based on that analysis, based upon the number of calls we've had, based on the soil and topography out there, you know, we did, we did the high-level math, and who's going to pay forty thousand dollars for sewers if you can get a new septic system for forty thousand dollars? So we have put that project on the back burner until either regulations change or we see some significant need for that community.
Tom, I want to be conscious of your, your time.
I know.
The other, the other two projects, we have a plant water system, but basically reused, as Tom said, our water's cleaner than a river, we actually try reusing as much water in the plant as we can, and we're going to rehabilitate that system so we can actually provide more equipment with that reused water. And we're going to replace a nineteen ninety-nine sewer line cleaning truck, it's actually going to be a smaller truck than the one we have currently, and which will allow us to get into our easements, which are behind people's properties without destroying their yards and things of that nature, make sure we maintain alliances.
That was the end. Okay, any questions for me?
You know what happens when you leave, right?
I know, I know, but I was going to tell you. Sean has my number, I am available for the next five hours by phone. We're on our way to Pennsylvania.
This morning is an interesting history of funding half-trucks.
But in all seriousness, if any questions do come up, Sean, just...
Sean, I always know you like hearing it's not raising sewer rates this year. We did raise them last year, Tom put it in his presentation, sewer, the sewer use fees are going up. That's what we raised last year, not raised for this year. I will say though, we are in the process of renewing our permit for the plant, the permit expires in September of this year, they're not going to shut us down. They may change our permit, which may require additional funding costs through sewer use fees and stuff like that, if they lower our permit levels for removal of phosphorus and metals and things of that nature.
Just quickly, the first three projects on the WPCA, capital projects that were, those are in your budget books, those are actually the first three of the thousand?
There's, there's three, and same thing with, to go along, the Holcomb area's sewer lines, we have, there's a lot of money, there's a placeholder there, if clean water fund money's available, we're going to look at putting sewers up to the north end of Holcomb Street, but that's just a placeholder, it's, no, no money's involved in that at this point in time. The dike, the dike analysis at the facility, with the storms that we've had recently, in the two thousand and eleven, the water was within a foot of going over the dike going into the plant, which would be a major catastrophe. So we're looking at, seeing if the dike is at the right height, based on current flood projections. And we're bumping the, we're still doing analysis on that, so, so that, if, if there's a cost associated with that, we bump that out a couple of years. And the same thing for the phosphorus removal, we bumped that out based on not knowing what our permit's going to be. So we have the money just set aside for that analysis and that, that cost for future years. But again, all of those costs will most likely come out of the sewer use fund.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Drive safe, Tom.
I want to move on to the revenues and budgeting assumptions for you.
For what? Pardon me?
The next item on the agenda, revenues and budgeting assumptions.
Can I ask you a dumb question?
Yeah.
So we don't, we have nothing to do with revenue, that's all Board of Finance.
Yeah, why are we...
So why are we talking about revenue? Next item.
Well, I don't mind talking about revenue, I mean, you're talking...
Not within our revenue, there's nothing we can do about it.
No, I know, but the total...
We don't set the revenue line up.
No, no, I understand that, but I actually like looking just at revenue, I mean, ultimately the impact on the town is the combination of expenses and revenue, so I don't mind looking at it.
Okay, so if it's in the context of information versus, there's nothing we can do to change these numbers? This is not within our scope?
Right, yeah.
Fair enough.
Informational purposes.
Yes, exactly.
Sounds good, okay.
Exactly right, we thought it would be helpful, we're mostly focusing on expenditures today, but just wanted to do a quick recap for you of revenue and budgeting assumptions that we used, as well as we did have a very small number of new developments that have already occurred since I presented to you on the twenty-sixth. So again, just wanted to provide, this is background information, leading up to essentially the rest of the day, which we'll be focusing on expenditures. And again, this was the outline for, for today, I think you all received your agendas, so I'm going to just kind of scroll through those. I will point out, at the end of the day, for discussion and flagged items, my understanding is that the, the term that you all have used here are sort of your parking lot items, so Sean, Melissa and I had talked about that in issues.
Wish, wish.
Okay, and so we do have time planned for that at the end of the day. We also have a couple of slides here at the end of the day, under the discussion section, again, that if you wanted to make reductions to the budget to try and get to the Board of Finance recommended one point seven-five percent expenditure increase on the dollar amount, and again, we can certainly help facilitate that conversation for you all in terms of areas you might like to see cut, so we'll tackle that, again, at the end of the day under discussion. And just a quick recap on our budgeting assumptions that we used, we are anticipating grand list growth of about six point four percent. We are currently in the middle of assessment appeal hearings, so it is possible that this number may change slightly. Again, background information for you, one mil generates approximately two point four million dollars in property tax revenue for us. We use the assumption that motor vehicles will have the same mil rate as real estate and personal property. And we're anticipating a loss of a little over two-hundred thousand dollars in state aid for the upcoming budget. Tom Roy did mention in his presentation, and I believe I may have covered this on the twenty-sixth, but the governor's proposed budget is cutting out town aid road, but what we are hearing so far from our members in the General Assembly is no way, that's very important to them. So again, there is some uncertainty in particular around town aid road at the moment. There's also an additional anticipated loss we budgeted for the elderly circuit breaker program, so essentially that will become an unfunded state mandate for us. We used an assumption of contributing about a million dollars to fund balance. We maintained our capital contribution in accordance with our current financial policies and practices, as well as maintaining our contributions towards our OPEB and our pension liabilities in accordance with our actuarial recommendations. So we've had a few new developments since I last presented to you all. We received notice from the Greater Hartford Transit District that we are going to lose about fifteen hundred dollars towards our Dial-A-Ride program. We will go into that in more detail when we get to the social services budget and Kristin's presentation. We also uncovered a budgeting error in our spreadsheets that we use to prepare the budget, and we have an ongoing matching contribution for our Youth Services Bureau grant that we receive from the state. That's an eight-thousand-dollar contribution that we make annually. We uncovered an error that we omitted that in our spreadsheet, as well as over-budgeted a thousand dollars in that department, departmental budget, so we do have about a seven-thousand-dollar net impact. We flagged that for the end of the day as an item to be addressed. We also found a coding correction that's needed, there is no impact to the overall budget, but we found a coding correction needed in our police department budget, where fourteen hundred dollars was allocated to the uniform allowance account, but that's actually for what's called the educational attainment stipend, so again, that's just a coding correction that we'll need to make. And the other new development we have is that probate, the request has been reduced by about, a little under thirteen hundred dollars. Another new development, this one is actually quite substantial, the initial estimates that we had received for our irrigation system feasibility study were too high, and upon further review, we feel that a number that would be appropriate would be to budget forty thousand dollars, so that would be a savings of sixty thousand dollars. Based on the value of the study being under that hundred thousand dollar threshold, it would be more appropriate for that to be reflected in CNR as opposed to capital. Jerry will speak to this a bit during his presentation later today, and we've also flagged this as an item for the discussion later in the day. And then lastly, I did just want to inform you all that the Board of Education reviewed the superintendent's proposed budget and approved the budget as was proposed, so there were no changes, either increases or decreases made to the superintendent's proposed budget. So, just quickly recapping on revaluation, over the last two weeks, we've had more time to do additional analysis in terms of what the proposed budgets, excuse me, what the proposed budgets and the mil rate impact, and then as well as potential tax impacts on various homes. So we ran some different scenarios, because again, with this being a reval year, if the mil rate decreases, depending on how much a person's home increased in value, there's the possibility that they could still potentially see a tax increase. So we prepared some various scenarios for you to show, a median home that lost five percent in value, a home that did not lose or gain value, a home that increased five percent in value, a home that increased nine percent in value, and a home that increased fifteen percent in value. Again, just to give you an appreciation for sort of a range of, of how a home may be impacted. What we've also done is we're working on putting a tax rate calculator on the website under the budget information page, so if an individual is interested in seeing, okay, based on the value of my home, they can put that into the calculator with the old mil rate, a potential new mil rate, to understand the true tax impact on their property.
Maria?
Oh, God.
This is, this is helpful. One other view that would, would be helpful is also to add, what percentage of Simsbury houses fall into each of those categories?
So, great question.
I love it.
Great lead-in, Eric, thank you.
I really didn't see this.
So Maria, just my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
What, what, what did we use as the median health, do you remember what we used?
Oh, it was right around three-hundred-and-five thousand dollars.
Three-hundred-and-five thousand.
Correct. Correct, I'm correct on the new list. Sean, would you mind speaking to this slide?
Sure, so it's a little different than the question that you're specifically asking, Eric, but this is something we had David pull through, and this is again, and as Sean had mentioned earlier, this is obviously a topic the Board of Finance spends a lot of time on and talking, these questions that they've had recently. But what we tried to do is show how many homes from the grand list, from the last grand list, we'll call that the sixteen grand list, right, October sixteen, versus the new October seventeen grand list, if your home was valued on the left-hand column in those ranges, then, and then there's a count in the second column, so we had, let's take, I don't know, one of the median ones there, if your home was valued, this isn't assessed value, this is appraised value, so actual kind of market value. Between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred-and-five thousand dollars there, kind of the middle range, there are eighteen-hundred-and-sixty-nine homes in that category on the list, and the median changed, so again, this is not, you know, every home in that range will have the same impact, of course, but it's eight point nine percent, so if you net out the proposed estimated mil rate decrease of five and a half percent, that they're looking at an estimated tax impact, in that case, of about three point three percent. What you're seeing here too, is something that I think anecdotally a lot of us have assumed over the last two or three years, if you get to these higher valued homes at the bottom of that chart, you have the average home between four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, the market value, on the new list, it's up about one point five percent, but obviously less than the rest of the homes there. And then again, homes over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, there's a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-six of them, they had a, a average, a median impact of minus ten percent. So in their case, the tax bill will be going down compounded with the effect of the mil rate.
This is really helpful, we just need to be careful presenting this, the mil rate hasn't been decided until referendum night, so this is just for information purposes?
Right, yeah.
And this could all change.
Yeah, and even the...
A lot of factors, right?
That's correct, Sean, and even the assumptions made, the ones that Maria was just referencing too, those are not approved by the Board of Finance, or they've been, I would say, even loosely discussed by the Board of Finance, there's no consensus even on using that million dollars to fund balance. So again, I'm respectful of the fact that we don't usually talk about here, but because of reval and the, and because of questions surrounding what the estimated impact is on taxes, you kind of have to at least touch on what our best information is.
Fair enough. This is good for informational purposes. Again, just don't want folks that are watching or hearing this to be confused that this is what's going to happen, this is what could happen, but there's, there's variability in these.
Exactly right, this essentially was just what we used based on the budgeting assumptions that we used, exactly, for informational purposes.
What I would add, I just think, for me personally, in terms of, I mean, we have a three point nine percent increase and one point seven percent cap, so the extent to which I push towards that one point seven-five is, in my mind, influenced by what's the pressure on the mil rate or whatever, so that's why I like to take a look at this information and go see, so.
So that's about seven thousand households, so they have the two thousand or roughly apartments?
Yeah, and there's some mix between that and multiple, yeah, multiple.
Okay. We have what, ninety-two hundred households, ninety-three?
Yeah, that's roughly right.
The only reason we're mil rating is because of the need for resources.
Right.
So I think we're going to move on to the IT presentation. I thought we would probably take a break around ten o'clock. Good morning.
This is the information technology portion of our presentation this morning. Our proposed budget, two-hundred-and-four thousand dollars, the increase of fourteen point six, it's a big number, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. It's where we're going in the IT department, we are a party of only two full-time employees, we're pretty much twenty-four-seven that we cover with the law enforcement agency, as well as with other departments that need that support. We're supporting on-premise and cloud-based operations, meaning that we still have a physical presence of applications within the building, and our push is to go to cloud, and we've made that migration very well. Still going to cloud-based operation, excuse me, is that, still has a lot of support time to it, and there's a lot of research to it, it's not something we just push out there, so there are some services that we do provide, all our cloud-based applications. One of them, just recently, that came up, was in Erica, we'll talk about in hers, is that she came to me a couple of months back about her e-recording, and this is where it's electronic filing from law offices that come in with land records, it's a really secure, a security-intensive application, it's in the cloud, but for us to manage it, we don't manage it, but we do manage a firewall piece of it, which is very critical to allow outside entities to come into our building. So there's that security piece of the operations that's always there and it won't go away when we push out to the cloud. Collaboration with other departments on new technology, that's been with us forever, we always have face-to-face relationships with all our departments, and we continue to do that to try to help them as much as they can. The website and content management development is an ongoing piece that the IT department has had over the last four or five years. That is pretty much with the same host provider that we've had for the last twelve years, it's a very good program that we own, it's very cost-effective for us. Its plan is very distributed, meaning that for its content and management, we control it, but we let, we release it out to department heads and other folks to make their updates to the website. So there's really, for, for running it, it's, it's really clean, and we do provide classes and things like that to one, to one website, excuse me, my mouth's getting dry. Service level of ninety-three percent completion, that's something we're proud of, you know, when we first started out, when I first started out like twenty years ago, our completion rate was a little higher, but it was pretty much all hardware-based, not software-based. And the next slide we'll see is that our device count is going up and up and up, and that's with the Internet of Things, we have, you know, HVAC vendors coming to IT now, they want access to their controllers, so now we got to open up firewalls, we got to make sure it's a secure connection, so all those devices we control that comes through my department. So that number of fourteen hundred, that's an estimate, it's probably more, but that's where we are, and we do that every day. And our support, I talked about already, is twenty-four-seven. In our support, I talked about already, is 24/7. Our areas of focus coming up is the cybersecurity, that's in everyone's focus here. The Town of Simsbury has already been involved with employee awareness training. We started that last year and that was a piece of a C and R project. We're going to continue that again for another year. How that program works is the IT department controls the training of it as well as the phishing aspect of it. So this past Wednesday, we sent out a phishing program, which are fake emails that go out to all the employees. And we see who's clicking on them and who's not. And if they do, they get, you know, a big red hand, stop, you've been phished. And it pretty much tells them, you know, what to look for in these emails. And this is pretty much in compliance with what the national standards are, is really to aware, get the employee aware as our first, you know, first line of defense for hacking. Network security, we're in the midst of that right now as well. The town hall and the municipal buildings are pretty much falling within a new generation firewall, which we replaced within the last three months. The library is going to be the next one that's going to have the new upgrade to the firewall. These firewalls are a little bit complicated. This next coming year, we're looking at some education for it. But these firewalls do all kinds of wild things. With Erica's product, when we allowed those vendors, those law firms to come in, they all work with a specific app ID and that's something where if it's like Google or something like that, in the firewall, we could tell specifically at, you know, this port coming into us, we're just allowing that type of traffic to this type of vendor. So we could see it all happening. So that makes it a little easier for us to manage. Okay?
Any areas that concern you from a network security standpoint? Any areas we need to focus on more so or look at?
It's always good to have, you know, redundant, we're set up redundancy on it, but really just to protect our perimeters right now of firewalls. And the next step would be the switches that we have, our core switches. Right now, they're all Cisco. They're up to date, but at that level is, to get all the information for us to manage, we got to start opening up ports. So how it works, and not to get too technical, is that if someone, you know, bleeds into an email, they click on it, gets hacked, it's really going to that switch first. That's its first point. And if that's a takeover, that could hurt us. So our next thing, really inside, is really tighten this up. We do have some funding left from last CIP, which we're going to do an internal evaluation of assessment. We're pretty much on the outside right now. So we're going to go internal now and see what kind of holes we have. And they're there, it's just, we got to bore for them and get them. And that's another thing, on the cybersecurity, a couple of years back, I don't know if you folks know that, we partnered up with MSISEC. It's a Homeland Security DHS entity. And we belong to them, so they give us a lot of feedback for, you know, cybersecurity, what to do, best practices, so on and so forth. Fiber optic buildout, most of you know already, we have the hot metal corridor that's gone up, goes all the way out to Simsbury High School. And then with the cooperation of the Board of Ed, we take some of their strands and we go all the way out to Town Forest Road to Tom's Building. The next portion is really taking Simsbury Farms, and that project is underway right now. And then after that, pretty much we've got as much fiber as we do to our major buildings. Okay? And then our upgrade to the Board of Education in town, that's coming up within the next four months and that's a, it's a really jump from our current version to the next. That program right there is an on-prem application because of all the financial information and whatnot. One of the internal assessments we're going to do is specifically on that server, whether we go to encrypt it or tighten it down, but that's on our, it's on our dashboard. Budget highlights, these are great, you're not going to like these, but the 22,000 increase in contractual services, and I did have, there's a breakdown that you guys should have. But the major hits to that 22,000 is the email exchange server. And we're kind of being pushed. We just got hacked.
Yeah.
So what that is that?
Okay, meeting over.
I'm only kidding. I shouldn't have said that. Is the, right now, we're in a shared Microsoft Exchange program. And what that means is right now, we get all our emails and stuff with the Board of Education and we share those services. The Board of Education is evaluating their position right now to go to Google for a really good reason, and they probably get it for like free for their district. So it's very cost-effective to them, they're making that decision, but that puts us in a hole because we really can't follow them. We're going to have to go somewhere with our mail and we're going to have to really pay for that movement to go there.
Why can't we follow them?
Because, and I'll explain right now, is that we're pretty much on a Microsoft, everyone right now throughout town is on a Microsoft platform, if you will. Their movement, like I explained, you could see that happening. The town's pretty much on a Microsoft platform and it's very conducive to their daily activities, to how our employees and our administration works with Microsoft and its acceptance across the board and governments. So we decided, or my point is to leave everything as it is right now, because we've already paid for that, there's no money coming into the desktop portion of it, is really take the exchange portion of it, instead of bringing it in, let's just push it out in the cloud. Microsoft does have a program that'll take our server and our services with it, and this is all the security, the backup, disaster recovery and everything else, it'll put it into a federal space, which is only by government entities, and then we could utilize that space. To do it, it's roughly about $10,000 to do that, and that's a reoccurring charge. And so that's the push, that's where we want to go. We still have to manage it and make our changes to it, but the overhead of, you know, software updates, the archiving and everything else is part of that money. So to us, it's a viable solution. I think it's a very good solution.
Can I jump in?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, the Board of Ed, the primary driver isn't actually cost, it's actually operational, their teachers, everyone in the classroom, everything they do is based in Google. So they're currently managing in the classrooms two emails. So operationally, it just makes a whole lot of sense.
Oh, that does.
And it just happens to be that they get educational pricing, which is pretty much nothing. For us to go to Google, it would not be free and it would actually be much more costly than going to the online cloud-based solution from Microsoft, so.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, so we did do, or I did complete a cost analysis against both Microsoft and Google. Google was very finicky where they would not sell out just their email piece, they wanted us to go with the G suite of it, which means all their products in email, which is really okay, but we don't really want to make that whole migration at this point in time. So Microsoft was a cheaper product, not a cheaper product, but it was lower in cost than the Google solution was. So that's that piece. And then the annual maintenance for the SimpliVity. SimpliVity is an environment that we have here in Simsbury. It's really two rack-mounted appliances. They're about 4U, they're about this big, and there's two of them here and there's one at the high school. And one's always in production and one's in high availability, meaning that if the first one fails, it rolls over. Those two control pretty much everything we have. Another security evaluation are those boxes that are coming up. With that is all kinds of data compression, dedup, it's just a pack full of technology. And three years ago, with the IT task force that we work with every day, they recommended this solution. It's a great solution, but at the time we got that solution, we tied in a three-year maintenance program. So what you see here now is now we're out of that three-year coverage, we're in that fourth year. So this is hitting our operating expense now. And this is something that's happening throughout the IT industry, it's not just, you know, here in Simsbury. Even cloud-based solutions now, they're just going to be hitting people with subscriptions every year. I feel that in the contractual services piece, especially for IT, will continue probably to go up, not as big as what we see here, but it will because we are pushing more and those companies make their money that way. Microsoft, it's even mentioned that Microsoft, within the next five years, will be charging subscription prices back to its customers. And then the last piece is the disaster server recovery. That box that's at the high school is our recovery site. A trends, a new thing that's up in the state of Connecticut is CGIS, which is a law enforcement data sharing initiative. We're on that right now. This is where our information that we have in our law enforcement, specific pieces of it, will be transported via a secured state fiber network to a database, and that's going to be their sharing initiative. Okay? On-prem cloud-based applications, pretty much speaks for itself where we're heading on that. Okay? But we're always working with those. Our security assessments, the internal one is becoming, is coming up, as well as, you know, any pieces that we do need to upgrade. And then one that's coming up, more and more that we get forward with mobile devices. I know Cheryl, you can't wait to get your tablet for your, for the board, just to manage those pieces. We don't have anything right now and as we push forward, and this includes the law enforcement, Board of Selectmen, town employees, there's software out there that we have to address to get those devices secure, should something happen to them or we could lock them down, erase them, so on and so forth. So that's a challenge for us coming up. And that's it.
Thank you. Yeah, well, questions?
Couldn't talk any faster, sorry.
Hey, Rick, you know, one of the things I'm observing on the technology task force is the degree of demands for just security overall. So what percent of your total staff time do you think is devoted to security? And do you think it's going to be increasing as much as it has been over the last couple of years or stabilizing? Just a little assessment as to the demands that that's putting on.
I think it'll, you know, I mentioned it in the beginning, maybe I went too fast, but as we push it out, we look at those dashboards all the time. So it'll go up for sure, even when the employee awareness campaign that we have.
Right.
I'm spending, on Wednesday, I spent, this is that one day, probably about an hour and a half to two hours on it, just to make sure it's running, you know, effectively. So I see it going up because we are pushing that way. The first part of our, first couple hours of our day, really, we start early, only because before employees get there, we could go through our, all the nightly stuff and all our dashboards to get that out of the way. So when the employees come and problems arise, we can address those quicker. So I would, it's going to go up.
It's very dynamic. I mean, the risks are just changing daily.
Yeah.
And the technology is changing daily as well, so.
What's, I'm sure within your community of your peers and all, you see reports or stories and such, has there been a significant municipal data breach of information at our, of a like community of our size and operational?
Farmington.
Farmington, okay.
Yes.
And how did they, how did they address that after the fact?
How?
How did they address it and then how are, how are we positioned to address or not address it?
Wow. You're going to get hacked. I mean, it's going to happen somehow, some way, it's going to happen, but the way you address it really quickly is your backup process and how well you identify it, how quickly you identify it. Some of the employees, it happened probably two years ago here in a department, and they already knew about how to react, and this person clicked on something, it came back, and the first thing that that person did was unplugged a little network cable that's on the back of the machine. Once that happened, we got the call, we reacted on it, probably happens in about less than 15 minutes, but the infection had got one part of our drive. So at that point, how to recover and answer your question is that we fall to the backup. So we remove everything, so it's almost like stripping it all out and then rewriting everything with a backup. That's pretty much what you do.
But we're best positioned for success as far as what we can do, what's currently available, or we?
We could better ourselves, and the way we better ourselves is that constant backup of the data that's on our system. And to do that, that takes storage. And the appliances that we have right now are sufficient, but the more and more you want to get that 15 minutes tighter, tighter and bring it down. So now that says, instead of backing up every hour, well, maybe I have to go every 30 minutes or 15 minutes to recover. So that takes storage because I'm taking that whole environment and I'm duplicating it somewhere else.
If I could just add, I think that, you know, you overstated how much the proper employee training adds really, that's really where it all starts. And this effort, I've been very impressed with this Nova Board training, you know, Eric Wellman remembers no sooner than when I took over his, you know, these hackers, they try to prey on transitions and new folks and new roles. Eric Wellman looked like, sent me an email asking me to set up a wire for him. Obviously, it wasn't him, it was a spoof account, but, you know, knowing that I was in a new role and he was in a new role, they are looking for these opportunities. So that awareness and making sure all staff, all down through every department is aware. And I hear folks talking about it more than I have before, people being very critical about emails that prove to be actually correct, they just had a lot of misspellings, but people are suspicious. Like, oh, it looks like it could be from another country. Well, doing it, just locally. But, you know, I think, but you know what, it's better that than the opposite. And I think, you know, this, I give Rick a lot of credit and I give all of our staff a lot of credit for really embracing this. And I've seen a real change in just our approach. Every little bit helps. As Rick says, it's not if, it's when you're going to be hacked or if there's going to be a hack attempt, but how quickly can you recover, but also what can you do to prevent it from happening also.
I would say that plus the new firewall are the two biggest things that we worked on the past year, this current year. Also, you should be aware, we, Rick and I work with the Board of Ed on a monthly basis, the school business manager and their IT folks, just as sort of an internal steering committee on a number of things. The most recent one is our incident response procedure, it's sort of putting down on paper what we do as staff when, if and when we have a breach. So we've sort of outlined three levels of impact and as you move up the scale, taking different actions. So we sort of have our protocol laid out on paper too for us to follow, including documenting incidents and tracking. So we're, something we're working on.
We also reviewed our insurance coverage last year as well. And that was a Farmington issue to make sure that not only cybersecurity, but social engineering fraud coverage as well.
Right. And like I said, these, I mean, the hackers, I don't want to go into forever, but the hackers are getting more and more creative. We've heard stories of, they look for the most vulnerable institutions out there, so they'll hack a veterinary office, a very low-tech database, and they'll find, you know, the name of your dog or your cat. And then the hacker will send an email saying, you know, regarding Fluffy. And now you've downloaded malware or you have, you know, and so they're, they're looking for things that we're not even necessarily controlling, but they're trying to make sure you're like, maybe that is Cheryl. You know, that could be, right?
I would, I have a dog named Fluffy.
Well, it is true. 17 dogs. Anyway, so, you know, we're just, again, being aware of that, hearing those stories, and I think it's helpful for all of staff to know, okay, don't just assume.
Good conversation.
So Chris, one of the things, you know, to answer your question fully again, is that cloud space comes back in now. Instead of us buying storage, we have the option now as we move to put our, put that backup data in a secured environment that we don't really have to worry about. So we could use that as a tool to make us react quicker to these threats.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to Erica's presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Erica, the town clerk, and I'll be presenting the proposed operating budget for the town clerk's office. To begin, the proposed operating budget is just under $227,000, which is at a 2.5% increase. We currently have three budgeted full-time employees. Mostly provide services in our office. And a big part of that is receiving and maintaining extensive records concerning a great deal of topics here, but our big ones are real estate transactions, which is our land records, vital records, which is birth, deaths and marriages, and elections, and meeting minutes for town boards and commissions. Excuse me, sorry. Move to the next screen here. We also issue an abundance of things. We issue marriage licenses, hunting and fishing sport licenses, dog licenses, certified copies of vital records, absentee ballots and vendor permits. We also maintain a database of all the town boards and commissions, including all the members. We send out appointment letters and resignation acknowledgement letters. For our areas of focus for the next fiscal year are to apply for the Connecticut State Library Historic Documents Preservation Grant, which we take advantage of every year. It's used for preservation and conservation of the town's permanent records. And I'm happy to announce that I was just informed in January that we are eligible to apply for $6,500 versus the previous $4,000. And that's because we now fall within the medium-sized category town. So this is great, this is an extra $2,500 to use towards preservation projects, which is a bulk of what we do in our office, so I'm really excited about that. Another thing that we're going to focus on is to continue establishing a records management program in order to more effectively and efficiently keep records throughout their lifecycle. We've been working diligently in our office, going through the records in our vault. It's kind of something that has kind of pushed backwards and records are building up in our vault that aren't necessary to keep. So what we've been doing is going through them and determining which records can be destroyed and then going through the proper process through the public records administrator to request disposal of these records and to get rid of them and to make to request disposal of these records and to get rid of them and to make space for our permanent records. As you know, our vault is our vault, and we have limited space to house these permanent records that are going to keep growing. So, we need to get rid of the records that aren't required to be kept permanently to make room for the permanent records. And I think this is something that really needs to be of high priority in organizing our vault to use it in the most efficient way possible. And that includes putting monies towards storage units, which we're using this current fiscal year from the grant that we received last year. So, we'll be getting two, we'll be getting an additional mobile unit that will be added to the system as well as a permanent, a fixed, storage unit. And my goal is, if you're in our vault, you'll see on one side, we have the beautiful shelving, and on the opposite side, we have a lot of, I call hodgepodge, storage, things that people have emailed out, said they don't want anymore, and we've taken them over the years. And they're just not efficient. They, you know, we're making them work right now, but my goal is to get those same type of mobile units on the opposite side of our vault. They're just, they're more effective. And then to create a database for the records that we have in our vault, so that when someone comes in with a records request, you can go to this database and it'll tell you which unit those records are located in, and marked the permanent boxes with the destruction code that says when they can be destroyed, what's in the box, and to really come up with a schedule so that we're continuously getting records, rid of records that we can, so that we don't fall behind on it. Because then it becomes a very big task and it's very daunting and it takes a lot of time, but if you can stay on top of it, it just becomes part of your daily routine. So, we're putting a lot of focus into this right now. And to that, this coming fiscal year, we'll be doing, it'll be our first fiscal year, full fiscal year, accepting electronic land records, which Rick touched upon. And I'm really excited about this. This was approved by the state in 2013, and it's now 2018, and we are just taking advantage of it now. But that's okay. The fact that we're doing it is great and I'm really excited. I had done it in the town that I was in previous, so I'm very comfortable with it and I see that it works. And a lot of towns have taken advantage of this. We're probably in the percentage, the smaller percentage that hasn't. And what it's going to do, it's not, not every recording that we take in will be electronic. It's not mandatory that someone do it, but it's an option. So, we will be working, our land record vendor is COT, and then there's four vendors that will reach out to title companies and attorneys. And what they do is they work through the vendors to submit the recording, which then comes to us electronically. And the fee for the recording is put into our account electronically. So, what ends up happening is that now that's less paper that we have to take time to scan, less payments that we're processing at the counter, and then all these documents have to get returned. So, the title companies are not required to provide an envelope with postage. So, we end up taking on the cost of sending these documents back, which are a lot of times mortgages, which are very, they can run around like 16 pages. So, every time we send one of those out, that's that much more postage that we're using and the envelopes and the labels. So, it's going to cut down on that and free up time for what I was just talking about, that we can focus on going through our vault. So, I'm really excited that we'll be spending less time on something like land records in the recording process so that we can free up time to do other types of projects that are kind of behind the scenes. So, yeah, you could tell I'm really excited about that. All right, on to the next. Budget highlights. There's about, just under $6,000 increase in full-time salaries, which is due to contractual salary increases. And then there's a $3,000, about a $3,000 increase in dues and subscriptions, but this is just a change in coding. So, it's just being reallocated, and that's for General Code, which is the vendor that provides our charter and code book. They do our codification and printing of our pages for our code book. It makes sense that that's in our budget because I have all direct communication because we are the holder of the charter and the code book in our office. And when there are any changes to the charter and the code, I'm the one that's directly sending them to General Code. So, it really makes sense that that's part of our budget, but it's not impacting the overall town budget because it's just being moved from the central admin budget. Okay. And then on to trends. Just in December, the fee to record some of the documents on the land records increased, not a big surprise since that's set by the state. It was increased from 53 to $60. Like I said, this fee is set by the state. Of the $7 increase, we, I don't want to say only, but only getting a dollar of that and six will be going to the state, but that is now a total of $2 that we will be retaining. So, really, it does, it does double it. So, if we have $2,000 in that account at the end of the year, in previous years, that'll now be $4,000, which in our office is big because this money in conjunction with the increase in the grant funding that we're getting, that's that many more preservation projects we can take on and just stay on top of it and doing these projects more frequently. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Well, you made me excited to want to take a tour of the vault sometime.
Yeah, and I welcome you. You know, we have records dating back to the 1700s, and honestly, it is actually, it's very remarkable. One of the funnest parts of our job is that when we do get requests for some of the old records, and partly, the sad part is that you don't even know these records exist in there. You know, there's so much history in there, and that is why I want this database, because it's going to force us to go through every record that we have in there. And then it's just neat that if someone comes in, you could search the database for a key word and know that it exists in there. Because if you were to walk in today and ask me for a record from the 1700s, I can tell you that we probably do have it, but we have to work to find it. And then the sad part is, what if we don't find it? It doesn't mean it's not technically in there, it's just that we're doing the best that we can to find it. That's not always easy when you don't have things organized in the best way possible. So, that's really my goal going forward.
Two questions.
Yeah.
Overall, how are we on, with the organization on the life of the vault? I mean, we're still?
Yeah. I, yes, there are, just like a small change that I'm going to be making is that we currently have land record books that are about this size, and nobody looks at those books anymore. We're, we are required to still print and keep the hard copies, but those are all electronic now on our search, so no one goes there to look at them. So, I am now switching to a much smaller binder because they don't need to be that big. They're taking, we're, we're spending more on the larger paper and the larger books, and they take up more space. And currently, we have them flat, like this, on roller shelves, which is very pretty, but it's not necessary because, like I said, no one is going to the books really anymore. So, just something small is changing them to upright, where they're going to sit there for a very long time, is going to save us so much space. So, it's just little things that were overlooked because space wasn't an issue when we didn't have as much. But I'm just taking time to look at those little things to, like I said, use the space efficiently. And I know that there's a lot of records still in there that are not required to be kept in there. And so, right now, our vault looks full, but to be honest with you, it's, I think we have more than enough space right now.
Excellent. Good. That was the answer I was hoping for.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I think, again, it's just, it's just making the best use of it. I've, I've seen town clerks with much smaller. Of course, I've seen much bigger ones too, but I know we can make it work for, for years to come still, so.
Are there opportunities for the projects that you talked about with cataloging, utilizing interns or?
Yeah, and a lot of that can be used, the grant money, that's the preservation. There's, I believe there's four categories. So, there's actual materials like the shelving, then there's services. So, you can use that money as long as it fits under the preservation, which a lot of things, believe it or not, do. Because just putting in new shelving units is helping us use the space best to preserve our records. So, it's not strictly having a book rebound. There's a broad scope of projects that can be done with that money.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hi, Erica.
Hi.
I noticed your statistics are relatively stable, you know, year to year, how many, you know, certificates, et cetera. But we do have a lot of changes going on in town. A lot of things are going to start happening. I know map storage is, is difficult.
Yeah.
And now, are you able to do that electronically or you're not?
So, the funny, that's another, we are required to keep the Mylar maps. Those are permanent. So, subdivision maps or state maps that come in, and they're big. They take up a lot of space. What was being done in the past was those maps were then turned in, they were reprinted and put into bound books for viewing purposes instead of having to pull. But then we lost funding for that because that was very expensive and also not required because you're only required to keep the original Mylar. And now, we have them all electronically, and then they're being reprinted and then to, so right now, we have our maps available in four different spots in our vault, which
That's a lot of.
is not. So, I know a lot of money was, at some point, was spent on reprinting and binding them into these beautiful books, but if you saw how much space those are taking up and they're not necessary, we will be getting rid of those.
Is that's going to be part of the project?
Yeah, because they're just not necessary and nobody pulls them anymore. All our maps are electronic, so they're just going to be look, and if someone needs to see the hard copy, we have it. There's really no reason to have these books additionally. I had looked into, because right now, we have flat cabinets, so they're piled into these flat cabinets. Not the greatest because you do have to shuffle through them, but again, we're not doing that very often. But I did look into the hanging map storage because I thought it might actually take up less space. Come to find out, it's just, for us, it's not worth the money. But the additional rolling unit that I'm having put in, probably within the next couple of months, I had additional map units put into that. So, we have room probably to grow over the next 10 years' worth of maps with the amount of maps that we're taking in.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, there's, there's a plan.
I was just thinking with all the developments and stuff.
Yeah. And what's great about these units is they're customizable. So, as time goes by, if we find that we want to customize them to fit different types of records, we can.
Excellent. Thanks.
Quick, Erica, one question or just a comment. The, I'm excited to hear about this posted shifting.
Oh, yeah.
I can't, I was, almost went off the rails there when I heard that we were being, essentially bearing costs for the mortgage and titles and stuff going back.
Yeah.
We all know, consumers, how many times we're going to pay fees.
Some title companies are good and they do provide, but again, it's not necessary. So, we can't hold them to it. We can't not return a document if they don't provide the postage.
You know, we talked, we, we're excited, it sounds like we're excited about the movement of storage.
Yep.
Away from physical to electronic.
Yep.
But the reality is that electronic comes with a massive cost, essentially, as we have to start to increase our bandwidth to store all that information and stuff. So, will that be something that falls upon your budget in the future, where you're going to have a line item for broader electronic storage?
Well, right now, all.
Or is that a chance for the town?
All the records that we record now, even if we weren't going to do this e-recording, they're already being stored electronically and attached to our land record index, which is part of the COT. And I don't know for sure if, I think our records are stored with COT in their storage, and that's all part of the contractual piece that we pay to them every year. I don't know if that, I'm not paying, you know, I pay COT a yearly subscription, and the e-recording actually is just a one-time fee of $1,000. It's not increasing our contract with them, that the, the contract that we pay, actually, it's monthly. So, right now, we pay just over $1,000 monthly to COT, and I believe that includes the storage for these records, but that's something that we can check on with Rick.
Just curious, Misha, you see that, I mean, we sort of like, I mean, we're not physically building a bigger vault, but we're physically building a bigger server of information. So, are we, how far away from we, we're starting to see increased cost based upon storage?
Yeah, I'd have to look back and see if there's different tiers in, in COT offers that may have downstream effect. Well, if we're not, I don't see any additional costs in local storage.
Anytime soon. Okay, good.
And like I said, these records, unfortunately, by state statute, still have to be printed in hard copy. So, that's why they are being stored electronically, but they also, until the state says that if you're accepting a document and it's being scanned and it's available electronically, that you don't have to keep the books, we have to keep printing the books. And that's why it's so important to go through our vault and get rid of the records that aren't required to be kept.
By state statute.
Yeah, because they take up a lot of space.
Yeah, I'm ready.
So, another project that I've discussed a bit, in particular with Tom Roy, who, in addition to myself and Erica, he also has a real interest in records management, is a project in an out year in regards to our document management software. We don't have that at the moment, but really looking at that as we become more sophisticated in our record, records management plan. I would say that we're very much in our infancy stages of that here. I, like Erica, get quite nerdy about records management, and she and I have had some conversations around this, and so it is something I would like for us as an organization to really focus on. So, kind of getting a handle, department by department, developing a records management plan for each department, not just the clerk's office, but getting a good handle on the required, the retention schedules, disposing things when we should be disposing of them, looking at high-density filing, storage, but then also that electronic piece, which I do think we sort of need to get a handle on our physical records first. And then, once we do that, I would love to move to the electric document management piece. That would most likely be a capital project. It would most likely be software. That would be an interdepartmental sort of team project. So, I do anticipate, again, in our capital budget in some out years, you would see a project request for that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, for bearing with me. I was a little nervous at first, so I appreciate it.
This is really interesting. So, we're at 9:50. Why don't we come back at 10 o'clock and just take a stretch and then continue on with the registrar's presentation? Thanks.